Uba Water dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Manny, could you do the roll call please?
Director Vasquez.
Here.
Director House.
Here.
Director Fuhr.
Yes.
Director Massick.
Yes.
Director Bradford.
Eric.
Director Matthews.
Eric.
Director Bishop.
Yes.
Alright, Director Bishop, we're gonna need this in front of the group.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on my nation, our God, indivisible, with every intention for all.
Please use me. Public comment, Manny.
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board of directors on any set of matters that is not on the meeting agenda and is within four separate manner jurisdiction. Public comment period are limited to three minutes per person and the total amount of time for public comment is fifteen minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the board chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and see their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the clerk will determine the order of speakers and announce their name accordingly. To ensure proper conduct, the board reserves rights to mute the audio and video if any members of the public violate internally accepted principles and norms of official public meetings. Do we have any in-person public comment? Katie, please state your name for the record.
My name is Katie Verdi. Yeah, those of you who've worked with me, you know I'm a funky, cool cord, so I would do you best. So I've been working with and for the Uba Water Agency since two thousand and nine. And I have walked itches, don't tell anybody, rolling dusts. I have done the four-wheeling, I've done horseback riding. I have been from Baton Rouge Valley down to Wheatland. And I've also worked from Sacramento to Chester. And I just wanted to acknowledge the impact that Uba Water Agency has had on people and places within the county. There's nowhere else I've worked in the state that has anyone quite lucky. So when at the end of the day, you feel like another day, another meeting, remember, there's people up down the county who have directly benefited from your thoughts, your actions, and their commitment to the county and people. So I just wanted, and best staff anywhere. I've worked with, seems like a million agencies, so no. So excellent staff, great board of directors of the years. My mom up in Marysville, eighteen Chief Street. My grandfather was superintendent of schools when the high school was built. So I've been coming to Marysville and in the mountains since the fifties. Probably since before all of you, so Director Alves. Yeah, and the, um, the atmosphere of the place and the character of the people that live here are, it was, were, yeah, were awesome. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it says spam or not.
It was the.
Manny, Manny slide that twenty dollars down.
Can you hear us? Hi, we can't hear you.
Okay, sent you your thought to Manny, can we just ask him to do a written comment?
No problem, did you want to type your comment here in the chat? And we can see it later in the meeting. Bye.
Commenter, we're gonna go ahead and move on, if you have a written comment, you can go ahead and put it in the chat, we'll follow up on it later on in the meeting.
Alright. Uh, are there any other people in the audience who want to do a public comment? Okay, consent items. Okay, motion been made and seconded for the consent items, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, discussion items. Item three, received presentation of a video highlighting the new power systems facility.
Yeah, so I will go ahead and introduce this item, it's very straightforward because it's a video to honor the new facility. This was created mostly for staff, but also to explain to the public and document the significant moment. So, don't have a whole lot more than that to say. I'm Key, I apologize, I'm Keyan Summers, I'm the Director of Power Systems, thank you. Um, so with that, Manny, you want to do the video?
Uba Water Agency's new power systems facility isn't just changing where most of our employees work, it's transforming how we serve.
This is a moment we've been waiting for for years, this is the beginning of a new era for a united Uba Water Agency.
The new complex in Oregon House serves as a central hub for managing Uba Water's hydroelectric mission, water deliveries to our agricultural partners, and for reducing flood risk for Uba County. Strategically centralized between New Bullards Bar and our powerhouses, this facility eliminates the infamous steep canyon commute to the older, isolated Colgate Powerhouse, bringing our team back into the communities where we live and serve.
One, we shorten everyone's commutes, we give back, probably on balance about half an hour to most of the staff every day.
And that fifteen minutes in the morning, that's extra sleep. And then in the afternoon, that's fifteen minutes of family time. So that's several books, that's a couple episodes of TV, that's playing with the kids, that's time you can't get back any other way.
It means I can see my son's soccer game, it means that I can participate more in the life of my family. It means that I'm spending less time driving and more time interacting.
We actually are gonna have access to food again, so that's kind of a side bonus, I don't think people realize how nice it is when you can go pick up a sandwich five minutes away.
I can't take a lunch break that doesn't involve leftovers from last night's dinner, so I can have something fresh.
That's so wonderful.
It's gonna be great.
Much like the winding drive to the old powerhouse, there were twists in the road to finding this new location. Thanks to a work culture that encourages collaboration, when Uba Water staff began raising concerns on an initial proposed location, leadership listened.
We really started asking questions about what do you like, don't like about it. It just felt like we were gonna need more space than what we're gonna be allowed to use, so we ended up with twenty acres here.
Land that allowed us to build on our plan for a warehouse and administration building, to add a mechanic shop, areas to store equipment, and plenty of parking. In bringing operations, maintenance, and engineering under one roof, and having meeting spaces, workstations for visiting staff based in Marysville, and gathering spots to bond as a team, we're not just sharing a building, we're reshaping how we work, creating a unified culture.
Teams that have been separated for forty, fifty, sixty years are all of a sudden gonna start working together on a day-to-day basis. I think it's gonna be a night and day change to our, to our culture.
Designed to work with the natural landscape and for the community, the facility is built with non-flammable materials and solar panels that feed excess power back onto the grid, a water tank for fire crews, a meeting space that could be available for occasional public business meetings, and a new safer school bus stop for students.
The location we got was an old school bus stop, and it had a big dirt lot and we developed it. It's a full-on school bus stop with parking, with the setbacks for the kids, and that's a huge benefit too.
A new location with still plenty of room to grow. A united team, a new era for Uba Water.
Next portion of this item is we're gonna do a proclamation recognizing Kyle Margato and Matt Murray, so Kyle, Matt, if you can meet me over here by the slide.
Yeah, there's probably a bunch.
I think you can take one of the. Okay, proclamation recognizing Kyle Margato and Matt Murray for their outstanding contributions to the design and construction of the power system facility. Whereas, the continued strength, reliability, and resilience of Uba Water Agency's infrastructure is essential to the safety, sustainability, prosperity of Uba County and its residents. And whereas, the development of a new power systems facility represents a critical step forward in supporting Uba Water's culture, operations, maintenance, and energy generation that path leads for decades to come. Whereas Kyle Margato, Water Resources Manager, and Matt Murray, Senior Hydroengineer, have demonstrated exemplary leadership, technical expertise, and unwavering dedication throughout the design and construction of this major capital improvement project. And whereas, a collaborative spirit, commitment to innovation, and attention to detail have ensured that the facility was constructed with the highest standards of quality and performance. And whereas, our efforts reflect not only personal and professional excellence, but also the values and mission of Uba Water to serve the public with integrity, stewardship, and foresight. Now therefore, let it be known that this proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Directors of the Uba Water Agency in regular meeting of August fifth, twenty twenty-five, and recognizes Kyle Margato and Matt Murray for their outstanding work and dedication, success of the power systems facility. So, thank you guys. Would you like to join us up here, we'll do a photo of these guys. And then after that, we're gonna vote it out. Yeah, you can go.
Go ahead and go. That's alright.
Okay, so is there any public comment on these proclamations?
I have commented on both the video link, the community, and video.
Who are you?
My name is Manny Fournay, I live down the road, I was late because I live so close. It's amazing to have you all come to this tiny little speck and make it a village. We have several local businesses that were already mentioned in your video, happy to serve you. You don't wanna know how many people come to me and say, "Hi, Mauricio, why are you guys building that big facility? How's it going with your water district facility?" They say, "No, it's not us, it's not North Uba, it's Uba Water Agency." Slowly, 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 that will trickle through, who you are, what you're doing for this community. And just to mention a tiny, tiny little thing, when Wendy told me you guys were gonna build here, and the school bus stop had been closed in orders to build a building, and we had to park in a crazy place. I didn't quite yell at him, I said, "Hey, what are you doing, closing the school bus stop and don't you know it's amazing? And it's an important spot, it's important." Just wait. Have, have, have faith in what we're doing, these school bus stops. Never mind, it's gonna be, it's gonna be best school bus stop you've ever seen. And, so promises made from skepticism.
Okay, any other public comment on the presentation? Okay, so I'm gonna call for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, thank you. Okay, item four, received presentation from intern on the projects, please, they're in the twenty twenty-five summer intern growth, Teresa.
First of all, I'm your HR manager, just here to introduce our interns. Very briefly, before I do that, we are in our eighth year of the program, thank you to you all for your support. We've had over fifty interns and we've hired three permanently, so we look forward to continuing to do that and then look forward to hearing from Aiden Wong. Thank you.
Morning.
You can sit down or stand up, whichever you're more comfortable.
Okay, hold on, I'm ready soon. Oh yeah, thank you. Morning, everybody, my name is Aiden Wong. Little bit about me, this past May, I graduated from Chico State with my degree in anthropology. And not long after that, I got an opportunity to start here as Uba Water's holistic intern. So, a holistic intern is not an intern who sells incense, if I said it funny to everybody when I introduced myself. But instead, the purpose is that I get to see a holistic view of Uba Water and all the operations, and especially in regards to environmental policy, because that was something that I was interested in at school. So I got to see how laws and regulations like CECL or NEPA or regulatory bodies like FERC, how, you know, they seem so abstract when you're reading about them in school, but then obviously at some point you have to actually follow, follow the rules that they set out. So I wanted to see how that actually played out, and that was what I got to do here. The structure of the internship was that every two to three weeks, I would move from one department to another, and I would get to ask them all kinds of questions and follow them around. And it was great, so with that, all my background out of the way, I can show you what I did over the summer. So my first two weeks, I was with environmental, with Jessica Nichols. And I got there, I got to learn a lot about how an agency like this responds to environmental issues like the golden muscle issue. And I got to see how it affects not just like the habitat and the waterways and that kind of protection, but also how you have to take into account things like recreators and the safety of the infrastructure and all that sort of good stuff. Afterwards, I went to. After that, I got to spend two weeks with Ethan Connigs in licensing, where I learned more about FERC and NEPA and CECL in two weeks than I probably did in two semesters of NEPA and CECL classes at Chico. He taught me all about the licensing requirements and the compliance process and how you go through getting that kind of license. Afterwards, I spent five weeks with hydrology, I got to go out in the field a bunch of times and see how they collect data and what that data is used for, which was really interesting to learn how that kind of data collection goes into actually making operational decisions to do with compliance, to do with regulation, that sort of stuff. And it all came together when I started to spend a week with the operators and a week with the engineers. And they showed me the day-to-day operations, how it actually works. And engineers took the time to really slowly explain to me all the nuances of the powerhouses and the dam and the control room and all that sort of great technical stuff, so it was a real blast. And now of course, at the end, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank everyone who made it possible. The board, all the people who I got to spend time with, Jessica, Ethan, the whole hydrology team, all the operators, Aaron, and of course, my, my primary handler, Creighton, um, stuff. So that's, that's my, that was my summer, it was a really great one, and thank you for making it possible.
Thank you.
Excellent job, Aiden.
Any questions from the board?
Is there a conclusion?
Just that, it was a really great internship and I'm really excited to take what I learned into a future field and see, you know, help wherever I go next, not only follow all these kinds of compliance regulation points, but also make it go smoother. Because if there's one thing that I learned, it's that a lot of the times these kinds of policies can like slow things down more than they speed it up. So that is a great problem to handle in the future.
Where, where do you think you're going in the future?
Um. Are you, are you guys hiring? Yeah, an, an agency like this would be great, a public-serving one that makes a difference would be awesome, but I'm open to exploring.
Did you get a chance to see the clearing of the watershed and?
Uh, I got to see.
The Campinville.
Campinville, um, I definitely think I went through there. I, I got to see the whole watershed.
Are you referring to the mastication projects in the forest, Manny?
Yes.
Yeah, did you go into the forest and see the, the thinning mastication projects?
That, I don't, I didn't see firsthand.
Seventy-five thousand acres.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've heard about that, but I didn't see it firsthand.
See it. It's more impressive than this.
When, when is your last day, you know?
I did the Friday, August eighth.
Maybe we can get you out there to see something in the next few days.
That'd be awesome, okay.
Alright, great. Okay, item five, consider approval of sponsorship in the amount of five thousand dollars in support of the Bill Air Force Base Community Ball, Ryan.
I think I'm handling that one.
Alright.
I'd like to watch you, Ryan, to look at his face.
I thought he was gonna dance.
Oh, that comes out. One thing I want to comment on, Aiden, hey, thanks for going first, man, it's difficult for the intern that does first, so great job. Thank you for leading the way. Beal has a, an annual, uh, a airmen's ball. It usually attracts about six hundred fifty people, this year it's going to be on September fifth at the Harv Rock. We have sponsored it for several years now. It's a real link with the community for Beal, and really it's honoring the airmen. It includes everything from like brand-new airmen up to senior leadership and their, their families. As you know, any, in, any sponsorship that's five thousand dollars or more, we bring to the board for approval, and so we're bringing this to you today for approval to sponsor at the five thousand dollar level the airmen's ball one more year. Well, this year, I'm sure it'll come back next year.
So moved. Is there any discussion, any questions, any questions from the public? I would just like to add that we're not the only sponsor of this, several other sponsors, I know Recology is in the same amount as we are. Just think it's really important for us to keep that link with Bill Air Force Base and just pray for Uba County, Uba Water to see the big gap, so.
And, and one of the things, if I could add on to that, one of the things that the sponsorships do is bring, the goal is to bring down the cost for the newer airmen to zero, so they go to the ball without any pain.
Okay, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, all in paper, aye, any opposed?
Great, and now you've got Ryan's games.
Next time you want a video of Ryan out dancing. Item six, consider adoption and resolution twenty twenty-five to the committee. Consider direct recording as a two grant deeds for Sessors Parcel Number zero zero nine, two two one, zero zero four, and zero zero nine, two two one, zero zero five, Doug.
My name is Doug, Doug Boers, Uba Water Agency. Land Manager, and I'd like to bring forth to you guys the, the two deeds, I'm sorry, the two properties, twelve twenty-seventh D Street and twelve twenty-nine D Street. Last meeting in May, we, you guys have given us some background and the approval to investigate these two properties for sale. We've worked diligently with the Davis family on a prospective purchase of these two properties. It would allow for a potential headquarters expansion at some point. Operator, or the owner of the house has owned the property for about thirty years. Staff had looked at several different options in the city, and he feels that all these two properties really see a benefit to the agency in the perspective of headquarters consolidation effort, maybe about half of a block in order to make a replacement facility. And there's just not that many options in the city of Marysville at the present. These two properties are residential in, in nature, but with rezone and potential tear down, they would, they would benefit the potential headquarters.
Alright, thank you, Doug, any questions from the records?
Step of comment, you're the chair. So, that's, that's right in the heart of my district, District Two, that's my supervisor's district. It is a residential area, but it would basically give us the whole city block. So, that city block wouldn't be like intermixed with that, one street over from an industrial zone. Making good use of, of the limited resources we have in Marysville, not creating any huge havoc on the city. They're, they're not, I don't think they're, they're major players in the property tax roles there. And I think it would just help revitalize this city. I have full support of the provision of that, I think.
Alright, I'll call first, second.
Are we gonna just make another comment?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take one.
I know.
Oh yeah, I was gonna take my comments, perhaps you're watching.
Uh, maybe everybody's not there, the agency hasn't existed.
Uh, maybe everybody's not, or the agency has an existing facility on Ellis Lake. These are the two parcels next to that facility. So that's why it's uh beneficial for the agency and for the city. I just thought a little clarification of, I understood what we're talking about.
Absolutely. Director Matthews, thank you. Yeah, twelve oh five D Street is is our current annex. And uh it's also known as the old three A building, but uh it's serviced well. Um, and that represents about two thirds of that block. Second, these two properties would make the the rest of that ownership of that half block possible. And then in uh, in using an existing asset, we're we're leveraging money already spent. As opposed to a potential purchase uh of a half block elsewhere in Marysville, which would require. Um, two to three additional owners and uh. So when you have a willing seller that has two pieces of property, it's it's a lot easier to get a unit uh for potential sale. Than it would be dealing with three individual properties.
With the, we've settled.
That's already been eliminated. There's already, is there any from the public who wish to speak on this?
Uh, are we paying the public?
No, when we when we purchase.
As a suggestion, Marysville is a lack of extra land. I I. I would recommend that we uh do great property taxes to help merge it a lot, be all of them.
I don't know, we can actually do that. Plus the county.
I.
There will be a process for us to work with the city to make sure that we have all of our entitlements. Um, any other issues similar to that are worked out for us, Director Vasquez, so we can certainly take that as part of that discussion.
One of the biggest problems is the black tax.
Understood.
Director Vasquez, uh this is a um, a completion of the circle. If the proposed property is successful in being a replacement office and we can consolidate the three properties into one. If the zone changes and build the new office, the F Street location would be access to our needs at that time because we consolidated. And that is in a very good state of repair. It's modern, uh that will go back on tax rolls. Once sold and would be a benefit to the city.
With use of money, investment in Marysville.
Yeah. Those two old houses, those two old houses have been on for thirty years, probably a very low basis, anyway, not generally much revenue conceived. Uh, my comment is of all the places that you guys have looked, I can't think of a better place for us to build a facility right on Ellis Lake. Existing old three A building removed in another facility like this there. I think it'll be great for the agency. It'll be great for the city of Marysville. And just like this video shows, it'll have. Our employees being able to, being closer to things in town or to everything, which will boost Marysville in that way. Uh, so with that, I will call for about all in favor.
All right.
You oppose? Okay, okay. Uh. Managers report.
Okay, well, uh, again, I'd like to thank um all the people that attended, attended the ribbon cutting and attended this meeting. I know that uh much much of the crowd here today is our staff and I think many of these folks. Uh, don't get a chance to uh attend our board meetings down in Marysville. So one of the benefits of having this new facility is the ability to have. Uh, board meetings up here a few times a year. So this will be the first one, hopefully of many, if the board agrees. But it's great to see you all. It's great to see uh staff and watch uh Chair Messick run through the meeting and watch the leadership of our board uh in process. So I appreciate you all for being here. I know there's, I went through the six AM meeting this morning, heard all the work that was uh planned to get done today. And I know I'm, we're taking you away from that work and putting you behind, but uh I think it's valuable for you to be here and uh listen to the governance process. So thanks for that. With all that, uh New Buller Bar is at uh an elevation of nineteen hundred fourteen, uh with a storage of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred forty-two acre feet. Our our goal through the um, the lower Yuba River Core flow requirements is to get to uh six hundred fifty thousand acre feet at the end of September. I know we're on target to get there. I think last year, uh the the team prized themselves in hitting that target. It doesn't need to be hit like within one hundred acre feet, but they pride themselves in actually doing so. I think we we hit it within a couple hundred acre feet last year. So we're on target to meet that end of year carryover. Um, on July twenty-third, we had uh a uh FERC required emergency action plan tabletop exercise. Um, this is required uh to practice our emergency action plan uh in the case of a dam safety emergency. Um, the tabletop top is kind of like the the junior version of the practice. Uh, we had sixty uh attendees, you know, public safety folks, OES, um flood control entities, staff. And we run through an exercise. Um, it's called the tabletop. It's cause I call it like the junior version of a functional exercise. Our functional exercise is coming up on August twentieth. That's where you dive deeper and actually go through a series of cascading events that we don't know what they are. We have uh outside folks draft up the events and um our staff and emergency responders basically practice responding to an uh an emergency event. Again, this is uh, it's required by FERC that we do this. Um, our team was uh well engaged and we had a great participation from our local partners. That uh really are uh super important in the time of an emergency like that. So seeing the, you know, maybe a little less than half of the attendees were staff practicing this and the rest were um, you know, flood entities and emergency responders. Uh, that was great to see. So uh hopefully we have the same attendance on the uh, the functional exercise on the twentieth. Um, and I think Brian Perrin, Brian, are you here today? Brian? Brian uh led the effort, put it together with in partnership with Tim Trung, who is not here today and uh it is his birthday today. Tim's our chief dam detective here, so you can tell Tim I called out his birthday uh here in the board meeting. Um, those two guys uh take pride in doing a thorough job with this emergency action planning. So I want to thank you, Brian, for doing that. And all the the folks in here that participated in that. Thanks for that. It was a success and we have an upcoming event. Um, the next item is power system headquarters update. You're here, you're seeing it. I report on this every week. I tell you. It it's gonna be done in a few months. It's gonna be done in a few months. This building is basically done. However, there's still some fine tuning to do here. As I walked through this morning and this is Matt, where where's Matt? Matt, I'm not ripping on you, but uh there's still things to do and you got priority done and that is get staff here. So they can shorten their commute and see what it's gonna be like to actually work together in this space. So thanks for doing that. It's totally functional, but there's little things that we're fine tuning in this building, like the backup control room. It's there. There's a bunch of monitors on the floor and a bunch of, you know, spaces for those to go. It's not done yet. That's okay. We have other backup control rooms in the watershed and we'll get to it. You'll notice in the drinking fountains, we don't have pot of water yet. And so we stopped to serve it by our pot of water. We will get there. Uh, but it'll be really functional for staff. I think you see that in uh, you know, staff smiles on their faces today. It's not in the video with Kayla talking about. There's food locally and shortening the commute. That's all great. However, if you look out the window here, you see a couple other buildings that are still in. I mean, they're not in major construction, the the basics of the buildings are there, but as I walked through this morning to kind of gauge where they were, there's still a lot of work to do. That's in our warehouse and our mechanic shop. So I didn't pin that down and say, tell me a date that I can tell the board when it's gonna be completely done, but I'm thinking now that in the next few months, we're gonna be functional in those buildings as well.
Yeah, probably about two months is is the expectation. They're trying to beat that, but we'll see. They're just working on flooring and cleanup and getting pretty close though.
And it's looking great and I'm not trying to take away from the suc- success, but I'm just trying to give an accurate depiction of what's going on here. So things are going well. Uh, a bunch of the staff is uh continuing to plan for the uh Colgate Tunnel outage. Um, in my read of the report, the uh tunnel drainage water conveyance system has been installed. And in the next few weeks, we're gonna have some um big water tanks that handle leakage water and treat the leakage water, of course, put back in the river. Those tanks will be delivered. So I think we are on time for um what we're calling the ready to go, a ready for outage milestone. On September fifteenth, that's when we all sit down, go through the checklist of things we have to get done before we actually drain the tunnel on on October first. And make sure we are truly ready for outage. So um, is Casey here?
She's on top call.
Okay, she's actually working on the tunnel outage right now. So I want to thank Casey for these reports and the entire team working on that. But it looks like we're um, we're hitting our milestones to uh drain the tunnel on October first. Um, the rest of the report here with ops and maintenance and engineering really relates to. You know, the annual work, the annual recreation work, but really the teams are focused on getting ready for the tunnel outage. I know there's been some um discussions about a project that's gonna be constructed in parallel with the tunnel outage, which is a. A bunch of uh transmission line relay work that PG&E's done, is doing and planning during our outage. And there's been some hiccups there. Uh, to be fully transparent, but team is working through that and getting um leadership with PG&E on board to help get that project on track. Uh, we've been working with them for several years on planning these two uh chunks of work, our tunnel outage and their relay package to be done in parallel at the same time during this lengthy outage. So uh Keenan and Carl, I know you're here. Uh, thanks for working with PG&E on that. I know you'll get that done. All units are online. Nothing's uh out of service, either planned or forced. Uh, we're gonna have some hot weather over the the next few days. We've had some uh seasonally cool weather the last few days, which has been nice. We've had no major uh heat events or flex alerts this year that uh put stress on the uh energy grid, which is is good for society. But um maybe not the best for energy prices, but that's just fine. We'll be ready to take advantage of those when they uh, when they come up. Uh, uh, comms update, the appeal Democrat, you've been at CBS thirteen in Good Day Sacramento, covered our flood risk, water supply. And Forest Resilience Grant from one of the last board meeting. We hosted staff from the State Water Resources Control Board on a two day tour of our facilities and significant project locations. The tour was well received and really helped provide context for the staff members who were able to participate. I'll just say this about the staff. This is the State Water Resources Control Board staff that drafts water quality certifications, for which we'll need several over the over the next few years. The most important of which is the water quality certification for our FERC license. Um, we had the opportunity, we extended the uh the invitation, have the opportunity to tour five state board staff members of our entire watershed. Um, here's a summary of how engaging it was. Um, we asked them if they wanted to go on a tour for a day. They replied and said, we wanna go for a tour for two days. So we saw, it was the most in-depth tour I've ever given of our facilities. And I think it was beneficial in that many of these folks um got their jobs or their current positions at the state board during the pandemic. And they, they're basically office staff. They don't have a lot of opportunity to go out and see projects. And you'll know that our first um water quality cert that we received for the Yuba River Development Project, we received in July of twenty twenty during the pandemic. Um, we went back and forth on the provisions and the requirements of that water quality cert and and eventually it got set aside by the state board. But these are folks that were working on it with us and they've never actually been to the site. They've never actually seen the dam. They never stood next to the Yuba River and understood when they're asking about flows and temperatures and biological benefits. What actually happens, where the facilities are actually located. So we got to, I got to spend uh, you know, four to five hours per day for two days. In one of our agency vehicles with five state board staff members in the vehicle and I was fielding. Great questions from these folks, questions that are two or three layers deep compared to the stuff we receive when we're like on a Teams call with them or, you know. Banning back the board email. So it was really engaging. We showed them um the top of the watershed, you know, all the way down to the gear. And I really wanna um thank the staff that helped me put that together, participated in it. But I just wanted to, I mean, I know they're not here and listening and they probably never will, but I want to thank the water board for being engaged. That was really good to have those kind of candid conversations. I also learned, you know, a bunch of them have have young families and I learned what they're gonna dress their children up for Halloween. So those are the kind of con- conversations we're having. It was very good. Okay, next, uh Ryan McNally, Brian McNally, Trevor Riley and Bonnie Mettler. Met with a group of high school students from Camp Singer to talk about our operations and career opportunities. We sponsored last weekend Back to School Bash held at Yuba College, which provided backpack supplies and more for local students. This week, we are sponsoring the Lower Yuba Brown's Valley Community Service District's National Night Out. And that ends my uh managers' report. Uh, upcoming meetings are August nineteenth. We'll have a regular board meeting. And a special board meeting and those will be back at uh the County Facility in there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Charles, you got a thought of the. A criticism, but when PG&E first started operating the dams, they always tried to take it down. Uh, way to the minimum so that they wouldn't do any spilling. Obviously, that didn't give us irrigation water uh in the following year. It was a dry year. And so that has all been changed. But I guess my question is, is why are we only going to six fifty? If we're gonna shut the tunnel down, why aren't we making the water in the six fifty somewhat lower so we'd have that revenue? I'm sure there's an obvious answer, but I just wanted.
Uh, a couple, couple answers there, Director Matthews. One, six fifty is our target elevation in Lower Yuba River, of course. Um, based on many factors, including uh water temperature benefits for a a a. A second year or a next year of drought, and you maintain a cold water pool. That's one reason for the six fifty. Um, in addition to that, uh we'll still be flowing water through the dam. We have to meet our minimum flow requirements and our irrigation demand. Um, you know, fall flood up and that, uh the remainder of the fall. So flows through the complex won't change. Um, so that's, that's kind of a a summary to say, what we can't do is we can't put a bunch of uh water through the generators at Colgate now or before. Uh, we drain the tunnel and then pull back water during the tunnel outage. We still have water that we need to discharge and release for irrigation demand, cold water benefits um in the Yuba Core. So um, that's the, those are the two primary reasons. There are a bunch of other variables. Um, but those are the two primary reasons why we have a six fifty carryover. We'll, we will also implement that this year when we do have a tunnel outage. Excellent question. Um, I see um the benefits of um, you know, or or the uh. A reason for your question is, you know, power generation and trying to take advantage of that, but there are limitations. Thank you.
Any other questions, directors? Okay, move on to directors' reports. Right down here, Andy, that one, right?
So I just, I'm gonna follow. I have a request to make. I know uh I continue to try to push along uh. Community choice aggregate or any opportunities we have to lower uh costs of energy in Yuba County. So I I'd like to request that we form a committee that uh could be a standing committee, but that looks at the development of regional projects and. Uh, the opportunity for not so much giving, giving power away to a entity, but uh helping develop their own. Their own assets and their own uh ability to pay for for power. So it could be opportunities that we see where pricing goes negative, um power can go into battery banks and. That are owned by a different entity and and to be resold later. There's lots of opportunities. But I'd like to see a committee made to kind of push those projects forward. I'd like to get permission, I'd like to create on that committee as well. Uh, it's key to Yuba Water, their energy cells and up to date on on uh different projects in the in the region and CCAs and how they work. I think we need to really get on point with uh supporting the community and some type of. Electric production projects. Just your thoughts.
Well, I can add a committee of the two or three board members in in the town.
I think it should be a standing committee though, because it's probably gonna take longer than than that year that you get them.
The advantage of a special committee is you're more flexible in meeting with the manager and learning. Where when you have a standing committee, you have to go minutes and public notice or. So there's an advantage in the.
Indecent.
Single purpose of committee. Well, just as a thought.
Could you uh take that into consideration, Andrea, figure out what we can do?
You could create the ad hoc committee right now and then. Make a point.
Okay.
And Willie, I think you said in the past there have been, there's been similar committees that that.
Little explanation there. Um, when we uh first came out from under PG&E and maybe even before we came out from under PG&E, there was an energy management committee. And it was really to help guide, it was a small committee, it was a stand. Um, and it was to help guide. Major decisions the agency was making related to the sale of our power once the. PG&E. Um, I will. I appreciate what Director House is asking for. Research on community choice aggregation um and energy uh generation opportunities outside of the hydroelectric generation that we're authorized to do. Um, I would just suggest if this is something the chair would like us to do, I would suggest we create a a committee that is generally related to. Uh, the generation of electricity. It can include opportunities for Yuba Water. I think that's why Director House is uh asking Creighton to participate. Um, but also opportunities that Yuba Water cannot do, like the sale of retail energy. Uh, but that we can pass along to our partners, uh Wheatland, the county and the city of Marysville. So I would, I would just suggest that the chair, if you if you do create this committee, uh create an energy management committee, uh whether it's standing or ad hoc, that's for for you to decide. Uh, a more generalized uh committee versus a CCA related committee. That's my only specific recommendation to Director House. recommendation to Director House's suggestion.
Yeah. So it'd be looking into every opportunity, every backup members. I'd like to be on that committee. Yeah. And I think they've already had that committee because the agency has already done considerable work on the backgrounds of, of DCAs and had conversations. So it's, it's ongoing already.
Well, we, we don't currently have either an ad hoc or a standing committee related to energy. We don't, we don't have that right now. So we haven't had that for a few years. So you, you have to stand something up. But Director Matthews is right. We have done significant work on researching community choice aggregation and other generation opportunities just as staff, but we haven't had a formalized committee, whether ad hoc or standing.
You, you could make them an ad hoc committee from now on and if it's something we're going to continue on with and roll ahead, clear the standing committee.
Yeah.
And, and because I'd like to know what the rules are. Okay. I will form that committee at all point. Director House, Director Matthews and myself.
And Chair Messick, we'll, we'll help you develop a mission for that to make sure that it qualifies as ad hoc. So we'll do that offline. We'll advise you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any comments?
Just everybody did an awesome job here. I teach for a living outside of this. So it let my kids come up here a couple different times and, and tour the facility while it was being built. And it's just memorable for those kids, especially the ones I teach that are at-risk high school kids and seeing opportunities in our county they didn't know they had and bringing those opportunities to our county and now to our city, which is, it's going to be a massive move. So thank everybody for what they do out here and thank to, thank you to the contractors and subs for making it happen too.
Okay. Director Pierre, your report. Your mission.
I was just thinking that I realized that it's an hour commute for me from my house up to this building. And I just realized I'm probably the farthest person in Yuba County from this building. But I'd be happy to come up here as many times as we choose to have a meeting. And, and I say that just because there's always great energy among the Yuba Water staff, but today was a little extra, a little bit extra positive energy. And it's obvious why. Your leadership has just done a great job. I can't really take any credit other than I think by the time I was on the board, I got to help, I got to vote to approve awarding the contract helpers who obviously did a great job. But wonderful job. You know, my experience in leadership is that if you make sure the needs of your team is met, that folks are, are best. So just a great building, great to be here. Take it. Also, Willie, you're, glad you shared with us about the, the two-day tour for the water board staff. And I think a lot of, speaking of leadership, I think a lot of people in your position would have said, no, I have a half day to leave where they, you know, you're a very busy person. To put that extra effort in to do that for them is, that's the type of thing you do often that makes a huge difference for us. And, and the regulatory environment, as we heard from Aiden earlier today, is, is so, so complicated and, and it's just going to continue to get worse. And, and the way that you deal with that is building relationships. That's the best way to deal with that. So good job.
Director Matthews. I would like to also say that our manager is exceptional. And the reason I'm saying exceptional is we have conversations, you know, one-on-one a few times. And I, I push him for different things and he, he helps people. But more importantly, I was trying to tell him about the history of how the agency started and how that I was on a, a committee appointed by my father, who was involved in the water, to help design the north and south ditch from the Yuba River. And of course, in, I believe it was 63, when they came up to bid, they had no bids because they had too many ideas and not enough money. And they then went and, and under the, under the Agency Act because of the flood in 55. So in 59, we went to the legislature, became a special district. They hired an engineer and an attorney who worked mostly on a contingency that if they could get the project to work, they would get paid. Now it's international engineering and I can't think of the tip of my tongue, attorney. So I'm telling our manager about this. He said, oh, I have a letter that I found in the thing from the Gomisakata. And he was the international engineering lead man. And he wrote a 12-page letter that talked about when the bids didn't come in, how he met with Virgil Sullivan, who was related to Pat Brown, how they got the legislature to get a special access to do what we did. And I guess I'm trying to say that when people say you can't do something, you can do it. And the agency is a perfect example of people did something when everybody else said you couldn't. So all of you here today are here and helping us do things that they couldn't do before. And as an example, we obviously didn't get water again. The hills had a different thing. Now that we've made the agency, the people got water in the eighties, the farmers. And now, and because of the license and the income we came now, now we're helping the hills with fire prevention and, and hopefully more water development. So these are the benefits of people who didn't take, we can't do it, we did it. And I compliment Willie for having that same goal and inspired all of you to have that same goal. But tell us what you want. We'll find a way to make it. Thank you very much for all of it. Thank you. Okay. I have a few things. Speaking of National Night Out, it's tonight. And I will have a booth at the Loma Rica Lions Club. Anybody's become the National Night Out. And I think the water agency are sponsoring the, the entire National Night Out everywhere. And I wanted to point out, in the two and a half years that I've been on this board, I think my wife's came once. This might be your second time here. And you guys play a video that says I can get home 15 minutes earlier. That doesn't apply in the, the rest of the directors. I'll still be home probably before midnight. The Mountain Fair was last weekend and I believe we sponsored that as well. Oh no?
Yeah, we sponsored one.
Sponsored the Mountain Fair. Is Kayla still here? Is Kayla there? Kayla? So Kayla, you stand up. Kayla got third place in the adult high competition. Would you like to tell everybody who won first place in that?
Do I even have to say who won first place?
Cheater. He's a cheater.
He did something.
He stuffed the ballot box.
I didn't cheat. But my wife, again, I have to give her all the credit. She told me everything I had to do to make this. It's her family recipe and it, and it worked. I, I, so. Also, North Yuba Water Agency had a booth there at the Mountain Fair and just really great to see that water agency getting out to the public and, and making so much public con, contact. It's just been great. And the last thing is Mountain County's Water Thursday night and Friday in Jackson. I will be down there for Mountain County Water then. So that's all I have. So with that, I will meet you in a jar.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.